Why don't we go ahead and start? I apologize, though. We thought 200 would be enough, and it's not. So I apologize for those of you who have to stand. I'm Mark Dayton. I'm governor. Tom, you want to introduce yourselves? It's Tom Landwehr, the commissioner of the Department of Natural Resources. Gary Heasley, the chief executive of Masabi Metallics. And Mark Phillips, the commissioner of IRRB. What I'd like to do is take five minutes, five minutes, five minutes, and just give you some background information. So if you just endure us for 15 minutes, then we'll have, open it up to your comments, questions alike. I hope that's agreeable. First thing I want to say is, you know, we didn't pick our partners in this undertaking. Barb Narra, the assistant commissioner of DNR is also here. You know, when I arrived in January of 2011, Esser was the owner of the site, the project, the land, and they had the mineral leases from the state, from the Department of Natural Resources. After several broken promises by Esser, we informed them we were going to withdraw the state leases, and their response was to file for bankruptcy, which put it into federal court in Delaware. And again, we didn't have ownership per se of the project. We had our leases that were part of that bankruptcy package. The creditors were owed considerable, several hundred million dollars. There were iron range contractors who were owed about $46 million. And all that got boiled up under federal bankruptcy law into one proceeding. And the bankruptcy court judge in Delaware ruled in June of 2077 in favor of Chipewa investors headed by Tom Clark. They bid reportedly about $250 million for all of the assets. And Cliffs was the other bidder. It was $100 million, we were told. So at that point, Tom Clark was awarded by the judge the ownership of the site, the project, and the leases from the state of Minnesota. Started out very promising. He paid back about $46 million that were owed to iron range contractors. That was part of his commitment that made it appealing first to all of us. And as then this next year unfolded, we gave him various timelines. The DNR negotiated a much tougher lease, set of lease conditions than existed with Esser previously. And the DNR can elaborate on those, but $250 million of equity. Money coming into the project was turned out, came from Dubai. Dubai and Dubai. Dubai, company and country of Dubai. I had to look it up on a map. But as long as it's good American money, that's the main consideration. Anyway, it was last spring, unbeknownst to us. And I don't understand all the behind the scenes, but the owners, Mr. Clark and Dubai, got into a tangle, and the board of directors ousted Mr. Clark and announced that Mr. Heasley was going to be the CEO of the project. And he's taken it from there, and he'll elaborate on that shortly. Again, the leases, the state has no ownership over the property, over the project site, or any aspect of that. We own are the mineral assets. If you have maps there, you'll see, and Tom can elaborate on it, but you'll see the general site, the region, and then you'll see specifically the site. And then you can see just above, in the kind of the gray area just above the map up here, that's the location of the project. So at this point, I wish it were all set. I wish we were underway. We've been told that full bore construction will begin in next March. It's not as soon as I would like. But a lot of people who have been told that we would have the option just to withdraw the leases and give them to somebody else. And that's just not correct. This was part of the bankruptcy package. The federal judge awarded that package, which included the state's mineral leases to Chipewa. DNR negotiated better terms after it was clear the bankruptcy court judge was going to award those leases to Chipewa. They negotiated much better terms. The only way in which we could make now Masabi Metallics surrender those lease rights would be if somebody else bought them out, which is always an option. Somebody could come in and make them an offer, as could have happened in the bankruptcy proceeding. Or somebody could come in and offer to go into partnership with them and share that asset. But other than that, we'd have to wait for the project to go bankrupt. And in that case, if it all collapsed, whether it was in bankruptcy court or whether it was just lying foul, we could retain the leases, but there'd be nothing there other than those minerals themselves. And there is value there, no question. It's reportedly the best remaining iron ore deposit anywhere in the range. So it's valuable. But it's valuable only if it can be used for something. And that's what Masabi Metallics has said they're going to do. We'll find out. I've been, like all of you, burned more times than I can count up on the iron range with projects and promises. So I'm a severe skeptic, but I don't see any alternative than to carry it forward with Masabi Metallics. They put 200, disputed about 100, somewhere between 175 million and 250 million into the project. That's serious money. They paid back the contractors. We know that, $46 million. That's serious money. They got other investments in the project itself. That's all serious money. So I can't see anybody voluntarily walking away from that, in which case it would be pretty much worthless. It's not as clear cut as I wish, but it is what it is. And as I say, there's no viable alternative other than to hope or make the thing go under and then pick up the pieces from there. So with that, Commissioner Landry, you want to elaborate on the lease situation?
Thank you very much, Governor. I think, you know, as Governor indicated, the process by which we convey the state mineral leases is laid out very prescriptively in statute. We just don't have sort of broad authority to terminate and initiate leases. The legislature wants it to be a predictable and objective process. And so that's what we're dealing with. So between the bankruptcy court and the statutes, we were dealt a particular hand of cards. And that's what we're playing with. The governor mentioned some conditions that we got by virtue of the leases. We got some additional conditions as well to hold these leases while Masabi was working through some issues. These are some additional conditions that had to be met. They had to make the final payments on mechanics leases, as the governor indicated, $46 million. They have to have offtake agreements for 4.2 million tons of pellets, which they have. Binding and enforceable construction agreements with contractors. Those general contractors are Minnesota companies. That was not something we required, but they put in there. They have to have ownership or leases of the minerals formerly owned by Superior. They have to have binding and enforceable debt or equity commitments. We require that to be equal to $850 million. It appears they have $9 million of equity and debt commitments. So they've exceeded that. A letter of credit to DNR for security of royalty payments. We've got that $4 million letter of credit to begin this year. And then they have to perform all of their other lease obligations that are in the lease document itself. This was a separate agreement. These are some of the key milestones going forward. So Masabi Metallics has to commence construction of value-added, that's direct reduced iron or HBI-burketed iron or some similar high-value iron like pig iron. They have to commence construction of that facility by the end of this year. You know, what are we talking, three months now? They have to complete construction of the pellet plant by December 31st of next year. They have to ship at least 3 million tons of pellets by the end of 2020. They have to complete construction of the value-added facility by December 31st, 2021, and so on. And so in short, we have conditions on those leases that they have to meet going forward. And this gives us the opportunity to take steps if they fail to meet them. On the bottom are some of the steps we can take if they fail to meet these obligations. They cannot distribute equity back to shareholders. In other words, if you're a shareholder in the company, you cannot get a payment until all of our conditions are satisfied. One of the penalties is that, or one of the considerations, they have to have minimum royalties paid to the department of 6 million, 9 million, and 11.8 million if they fail to meet these obligations. So it's a serious financial penalty as well. And then if they fail to meet obligations, we will double the rent and royalties owed to the state if they meet some of these construction and production timelines. So very serious consequences if the company fails to meet their obligations. I think the key point that we really want to make tonight, and this is something hopefully you all have a copy of the map. This is the current ownership pattern at the mine pit. Now let me explain what you're looking at the map here a little bit. The black line indicates the currently permitted mine. Now, under Minnesota law, you have to get a permit to mine to do any of these projects. And that permit to mine indicates exactly where the mine pit is. This is what's currently in the permit to mine that Esser obtained, that now Masabi Metallics holds. You cannot do any mining absent a permit to mine. And so this is the only permitted mine in that area right now. This shows by the three colors the control of those mineral rights. Now let me quickly add that the mineral rights that are held by Cliffs are currently under litigation in district court. And so that is currently available right now, but that could change depending on district court ruling. So what you're looking at there is in blue is Masabi Metallics 100% control. This is what they own or lease, 100% control. 54% of the mine pit is controlled by Masabi Metallics. Not all of that is state leases. There's a little bit of private lease in there, but the bulk of that is state minerals. In the yellow, 325 acres, that's jointly controlled by Masabi Metallics and Cliffs. In other words, there's a 50-50 ownership of those mineral rights. And state law provides for how you handle that. One of those entities can mine those resources. They have to pay the other entity for the profit on those resources. That's laid out in state law, and a court has to approve how that happens. That's about 41% of the pit. And then the remaining red, 41 acres, is what Cliffs owns or has 100% control of. But again, that is what's being contested in district court right now. If you step back and go to the bigger picture, this map shows a larger area, obviously. Those brown lines above and below, that is the iron formation through the range. You can see the oval in the center. That is the pit that we saw in the previous picture. And the red polygons are those mineral assets that are held by Cliffs. So you can see that, yes, Cliffs holds a substantial amount of acreage of mineral rights in the area, but very, very little in the pit proper. A couple of other things I'd note on that. The permit to mine that currently Masabi Metallics holds also includes the areas that are in the stockpile to the north, the plant to the north, and the tailings basin to the east. That is all under the control of Masabi Metallics. What you don't see in here is what is owned by Masabi Metallics. And it is a large geography around that area. So as I mentioned, it includes those processing areas as well as the tailings basin. So Masabi Metallics owns several thousand acres in the area. Cliffs owns several thousand acres in the area. There is opportunity there for mining. Cliffs has obviously got some substantial opportunity for mining there. They have never submitted a request or permit to mine, to mine those resources, but they have that ability to do so in the future. Governor, I just close by mentioning, everybody has an opportunity to get a copy of the FAQ, the frequently asked questions. We're going to put that last slide back up, and then I'll turn it over to Gary Heasley.
Okay. Thanks to everybody for coming tonight. You know, it's impressive to see so many people come out to talk about a project like this that can have a huge impact on this community. You start thinking about what this project means to the iron range. And we're talking about multi-generational, high-value jobs. I grew up in an area that was a steel town. And when I was a kid, I watched the layoffs roll through that town like a freight train. And what was left in the wake was economic devastation. It was incredibly frustrating to watch these 100-year-old steelmaking operations just one by one go down. So I know how important it is to keep high-value jobs in a community and what happens to a community when they go away, right? We also know that no market stands still, right? So the iron ore market in this country has gone through some really difficult times. For those of you that have been around a long time, you know, back in the early 2000s, when all those blast furnace companies, those integrated operators went into bankruptcy, Cleveland Cliffs played a critical role in keeping those companies alive and bringing them back. They were actively involved. Actually, I was involved in some of those projects with Cliffs, helping them bring those furnaces back, bring those companies back, and restore a market that could have gone away. So I know that Cliffs has been a critical element of bringing economic value to this iron range. And I've worked with some of those people for years. I've known Lorenzo a long time. You know, he's an impressive guy. I've got a lot of respect for him. He's done a lot of great things. And the people in Cliffs are a great bunch of people. But the truth of the matter is that no market can stand still. I saw that as a child, as I watched the market that supported my town disappear. So we don't ever want to see that happen again. So when you start looking forward in the iron range, you say, where do we go from here? The last 100 years has been pretty good, but where do we go from here? And there are a couple of answers. One is that you've got to tap into more resources. You've got to continue to responsibly develop the resources that are up here. That is really, as you know, such a critical element of this community and what has driven your economic success for the last 100 years. You've got to continue to move forward. The other question is, where do your pellets go? Where does this product go? And what we've seen over the last decades is a continuous decline of market share by the blast furnace community. Meanwhile, we've seen the entire steel industry in the United States and Canada, you know, have this dramatic shift to a totally different balance. It used to be 90% blast furnace, then 80, then, now it's less than 50% blast furnace. In order to keep moving forward as a community, it's not just about developing those resources. You've got to get out and access the markets. And the markets have changed. Now, what's Cliffs doing about that? Well, you look at what they're doing down in Ohio. They, I don't know why it's Ohio, but they decided to build a DRI facility in Ohio to go ahead and access those markets. What's it mean here? As we bring this project up, the goal isn't just to dump more pellets into the blast furnace market. It is to go into the value-added products, just as Cliffs is doing, that would allow this business, Masabi Metallics, to access an entirely different market that has never been available to this community before, right? So these are critical elements of how you move forward. And when I look back at what I saw as a child, as my community really crumbled under the weight of bad business models and, you know, a failure to adapt to changing times, I see here a chance to do the exact opposite. And as you look forward 20 and 30 years, look, this isn't about the people in this room, right? It's about your children and your grandchildren. It's about them having the same opportunities you had, right? That's why we're here, when you really get down to what it all means. Now, I've been here for less time than any of you. You all know probably more about this project than I do. You've certainly been on the range longer than I have been, all right? I've been up here a bunch of times over the years, seen some projects. But this is really the first time I've had a chance to dive into this project. I've been hearing about this for 20 years. I've been hearing about this asset being developed for two decades. And I've never quite understood, you know, why it never came to market. Well, you know, I know that this has been a troubled history. I know that, you know, obviously it was a bankruptcy. But when I finally got on site and got to look around, there's some things that cannot be missed. One, it's a great site. It's an absolutely fantastic place to put a mine. It's a brownfield site. So a lot of the infrastructure that's required is, you know, in place. And when you look at what happened with the money invested so far, there are hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars worth of construction already in place that can be used going forward. Now, we haven't changed the plan, right? The plan isn't different than it was. So those buildings that you see as you drive down the road, and you can sort of see over the trees, all those get used. All that construction work done, done by people who live here, right? All that work is still in place. And to move forward, you just pick up the wrenches and go, right? I've never seen that before. I've done brownfield and greenfield construction projects, and I've been involved in lots of different things. I've never seen a situation where you can find a place that's partially built and all the assets in place are valuable. So this is a tremendous advantage. It really makes the project attractive. I think that's why you've seen one party after another try to come in and make this happen, right? So there's some really good facts. When you think about what happened as the company slipped into bankruptcy and went through that terrible period, the Chipewa group, right? The folks who brought me in, they invested during the bankruptcy period, really before they even had a plan and had successfully emerged. They didn't even have leases. They didn't have all of that done. Normally, you don't put any money in until you got the leases secured. Who would do that? But they did, right? And they put more than $200 million into Masabi Metallics during the bankruptcy and after to do a couple of things, some really important things. One, they paid a bunch of the contractors and prepetition creditors who were owed money by the project, right? That money came out, went right into this community. Now, I've never seen that before. Typically, when you see a bankruptcy and somebody emerges like that, anyone with a prepetition claim might get a note. If there's a really high-value sale, they might get some cash. But to emerge and spend so much of the available capital on paying the local community for the work that had been done prior to the bankruptcy is really, in my experience, unique, right? Now, the other thing that had to happen, they had to buy some land. So some land acquisitions were made. There are a lot of fees and things that happened. But the good news is, there has been steady construction going on on the site for at least 15 months. That's not necessarily at the level I'd like. I'd like to see it increase a bit. I think all of you would like to see it increase a bit. But it has been steadily going forward for months. There were people on site today working on the project. Most of that work has been done in what we call the induration building. Again, you folks, you know, been around this a long time. You know, it's a critical element of the pellet production process. So the money is going into, you know, an element where all that helps us advance the project and advance the schedule. So that's another sort of good fact here. Now, having put in the 200-plus million dollars that have gone into the project in the last 15 months, Masabi Metallics, as you heard, had a bunch of deadlines that had to be met, some preconditions that had to be met in order to win the leases back, in order to meet some of the regulatory permit-related issues as well. And as we've watched the project move forward, the company has done those things. It has done what it was required to do in order to get the leases reinstated. So now you've got a project with leases in hand, permits in hand. You've got a mining plan that is already permitted. You've got equipment on site that is partially constructed. You've got equipment in some of our vendors warehouses that's already constructed and ready to ship the site. This is an extraordinarily good situation for a project that's gone through this kind of trouble. Now, you know, in order to move forward, we've got a lot of work to do. We've got to finish some engineering. We've got to continue to meet the conditions of our creditors. We have to do the things necessary to drive the project to a successful conclusion, and that's what the mission is. So we're picking up the pieces and kind of cleaning up some of the chaos and driving this thing forward in a more orderly fashion.
Could you take, you know, could you take one more minute and just tell people your experience in this industry, which is considerable?
Sure. Sure. Yeah, I've been around the steel-related industries for a very long time. You know, I've been involved in projects with companies. Well, there's an SDI person in the room. I worked with SDI for a while in everything from steelmaking. I actually spent some time up here working on one of their projects down into fabrication. I've done a lot of turnaround work. Back, as I said, during the bankruptcies in the early 2000s, when it kind of looked like a lot of these blast furnaces were going to be permanently gone, which for this region would have been utter devastation. I was involved in something like 10 of those bankruptcies, helping find a path out. And with most of those companies, at least parts of them survived, so much so that the mines up here kept making iron ore. Because if those mills went down, if those furnaces stopped cooking iron, the range would stop. So I was involved in a lot of that work. And I've done a lot of financing and mergers and acquisitions type work. I've done a lot of operations. I've spent time in commercials. So I've sort of been in a lot of seats. And all of that comes together to allow me to come in and kind of quickly assess what's going on here and figure out what we have to do to start driving forward. And that's the mission. It's quite simple.
So that, we have, raise your hand if you have one of the microphones that, okay.
We have people with, Governor, we have people with blue jackets who have the microphones.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing that. So questions, comments? Can we start here?
Thank you. Gary and Commissioner, a question for you. Two major stipulations for the reinstatement of the leases to Masabi. We're supposed to be getting construction financing and getting offtake, real offtake agreements. With all the madness, confusion, and craziness thrown at Esser, Chipewa, Tom Clark, Dubai, Riverdale, Merida, Miranda, Venner, Mercuria, et cetera, who exactly has the $650 million backing from Masabi now? And who exactly is the offtaker where these pellets are going to be used?
So the financing that was put in place, well, let's back up one step further. You know, there were construction contracts that had to be put in place in May. Those were done with local contractors, that I think all of you know. Then in June, there was a requirement to put the financing in place. That financing was put in place by a trading group. And the lead arranger there is a group called Riverdale. Riverdale will provide an offtake. They've provided an offtake so that the pellets can be sold, and they can access any market globally. So there's no limitation on where they go. That financing, that 650 million agreement is in place. And we now are doing the things that we have to do to meet the preconditions so we can access that funding. So that's where we are right now.
Okay. I guess in a more specific, so we have an offtaker, a broker for the pellet. Do you have a final home or destination for the pellets?
No, these pellets can be traded out into the global markets. And we've got a lot of time to finally determine which furnaces they go into, right? There'll have to be some testing done. I mean, it sounds like you've probably been around the iron ore business a while. So you know what has to happen to go actually and land in a furnace and start making iron ore or making metal, you know, making metal. So that'll be something that happens concurrent with all the construction activity. We got time to get that done.
So right now, we don't have a sales contractor or a customer?
No, no. Now, you're jumping ahead a bit. I'm not sure what you're thinking here. So we've got an offtake agreement in place to market these pellets. We don't currently have any pellets, right? So before we can actually sell them into a furnace, we have to make them, right? So what's going to happen is, as we finish construction, right? Our offtakers will market these pellets. We will find the final sources and homes, just as we're all set up before. All these pellets in the past had also found homes, right? So not sure where you're going with it, but the thing I'm not worried about right now is where these pellets land. The market is, you know, very strong. There are lots of places to go. And as we move into the value-added market, and as Cliffs moves into the value-added market, we open up vast new opportunities that aren't even available to the iron range today.
Give somebody else a chance here.
Hi, Governor Dayton, thank you. My name is Andreas Zapanzich. I'm mayor of Babbitt. You talk about you came from a town, Mr. Heasley, sorry, that, you know, you saw this deal, you know, everyone closed down and out. Well, our town is pretty much there. It used to be over 3,500 or 3,500 people. I saw pictures of what it used to be. I saw what the school used to look like. We're down to one school. Our kids' classes are getting cut, et cetera. So Cleveland Cliffs is our major employer in the city. And I'm here with a number of elected officials from the range area. So we're all here representing communities that benefit greatly from Cliffs operations. I have some questions, though, in regards to leases. And I'm just going to say, you know, say the questions. I deal with contracts. And if the construction doesn't start by the end of this year, what happens then? And then also, if it's not completed by 2019, then what happens? I mean, do we keep on going all the way down to 2023, you know, when people are supposed to be getting money? And then if doubling the consequences is a reaction of the, you know, if they don't fulfill the terms, then what does it take to terminate those leases? Now, Cliffs has the commercial and operating expertise and as a merchant is the company that'll maximize production for both blast and arc furnaces. And they are generating lots of cash right now. I don't understand if Masabi Metallics doesn't come forth with even just the closest one right now, which is December 2018. What's it going to take? And why can't the state meet with Mr. Gonzalez and come to an agreement?
I just say, I have... I agree with everything you said, and Mr. Heasley also... I agree with everything you said, and Mr. Heasley also about Cliffs. You know, they've been a very important leader in the industry here in Minnesota and elsewhere, and they employ 850 people, Babbitt, North Shore, and up here. So, you know, I want a good relationship there. I want those continuing relationships and, you know, whatever else. Again, they own sites where they could request from DNR a permit to mine. If they want to build, as I've read, Mr. Gagan Galvez has said, that they want to build a plant, if they want to build a value-added plant here, you know, they can begin that process. To date, they haven't done so. And so, you know, it is what it is. We don't have the ability, since it's now owned by Misabi Metallics, to go out and negotiate with somebody else. I mean, that wouldn't, that'd probably be illegal, but certainly wouldn't be proper. But you want to talk about the leases, what the consequences?
Sure. Let me, and some of this has been in the media, so I apologize if you've heard this before. But I started out by mentioning, this is a statutory, very prescriptive process to do state mineral leases. And right now, the only, that permit to mine is only viable under, that, those mineral leases are only viable under that larger permit to mine, okay? That permit to mine is given for an entire project. So it's all of the facilities, it's all of the processes, it's all of the construction that has to happen. And if, the only way we can convey those leases is by conveying that permit to mine. So that whole permit to mine has to go. So that means anybody who wants to get those leases has to take on that whole project. And that's what happened in the bankruptcy proceeding, right? So the bankruptcy court put it up for bid, got two bids, 100 million from Cliffs and 250 from Tom Clark. And so bankruptcy judge awarded it to now Misabi Metallics. We can't, there are a couple of provisions in the documents that we've got that allow us to terminate the leases. If they don't finish construction of the pellet plant by December of next year, we can terminate the lease. If they don't provide 3 million tons of ore by December 31st, 2020, we can terminate the lease. So we have, we have options to terminate that project. But if that happens, if that happens, and that project disappears, those leases only become available through the regular statutorily described process. And that means that somebody submits to us a permit to mine. That means we start the clock all over again at 12 o'clock. And that means somebody comes in with a permit to mine that requires all of the environmental review, requires all of the permits, not just a permit to mine, but the air quality permit, the water quality permit, you know, any number of permits. All of that, in a really good situation, would take six years to complete. So if we eliminated this project, and we were able to convey those leases to another entity, Cliffs or otherwise, nothing's going to happen for at least six years. So right now, given that process and given where we are with the Misabi Metallics, we're moving ahead, seeing that as the most viable option to get something going up here in this project.
Okay.
Governor Dayton, my name's Andy LaBarge, and I'm here to represent all of us at United Taconite, and I'm sure I can speak a lot for our brothers and sisters at Hibbing Taconite. We have been through the toughest times with Cliffs. Lorenzo, we call him Uncle Larry, and we have no one to trust him and his word. Our families, friends, coworkers, businesses all support Cleveland Cliffs, and we support what Cliffs is trying to do here. My question to all the politicians and leaders that have a hand in this fiasco is this: If you do not support Cliffs, we don't support you. Do you hear us?
I don't know what supporting Cliffs means to you. I have great respect, as I said, for what they're doing up here at their sites. We have to follow the law. We have to follow, Esther went into bankruptcy. We have to follow federal law under bankruptcy. We have to follow state and federal law. Supporting Cliffs is not the point of where we are today. They haven't, if Cliffs had made a competitive offer in bankruptcy, they'd own this project today. If they wanted to take over the project and the existing permit to mine, they'd have to buy it from the present owner, Misabi Metallics. The state doesn't own the project. We own the land, which has mineral leases now in the hands of Misabi Metallics. That's, they have that legal right. And we're going with what is existing because we don't have the power or the authority to just say, well, we're done with, we're done with you. We're just going to take, pass it on to Cliffs. We don't have that authority.
You know, just a comment. I mean, I can sense the passion with which you, from Cliffs, are looking at this. And it's a little surprising because I hadn't seen this before. Now, I've certainly heard what Lorenzo said, and like you, I trust Lorenzo, and I've known him a long time, and I think he's a great guy. But no one has done anything to Cleveland Cliffs here. As I understand it, and you all know better than I, I don't think this site has been mined since maybe the 80s. Was it the 80s is the last time it was mined? So this has been an idle piece of property for decades. And at least for 20 years or so, different groups have been trying to figure out how to make this work. And I don't remember Cliffs ever doing that. And I, so I don't understand, you know, exactly what you think people have taken from Cliffs, but no one's taken anything from Cliffs. If Cliffs wants to develop new mines, they're free to go do it. If they want to invest in their existing mines, they do, and they, and they're free to do that. Cliffs hasn't been blocked, or nothing's been done to Cliffs, right? So it could be that you're just, maybe you're looking at this in a way that I don't understand. It'd be one thing if somebody did every single thing they could do to try to kill a project, right? But not do anything to develop a project. Now, that, I could see that making people angry. But no one has harmed Cliffs in any way. Cliffs has total freedom to do whatever they want. And if the land that they've got leases on, they want to mine, they can take the years and years and invest the millions, and they will do that. That's 100 years of history with Cliffs doing that, right? So I don't see a problem here. I don't see the fight. Remember this: The key to moving your communities forward isn't about battling between corporations. That's not going to do anything. The key to moving your communities forward is developing resources to be cost-competitive globally and accessing the right markets. And again, I point to what Cliffs is doing down in Ohio in building that value-added plant to make DRI. That is a brilliant move. That opens up a market that's been out there for decades and decades that Cliffs has never accessed. That opens up great new opportunities for Cliffs, and I think it's really important for the Range, right? Now, well, you know, that's a question for local folks to ask, maybe, but I'm sure that they picked that site for great reasons, and I don't know what those are. I wasn't involved. But this company, Misabi Metallics, has done nothing to Cleveland Cliffs to harm them in any way. So
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Dave Cartella. Before I ask a question for Mr. Heasley, I want to make sure you understand something that's important. This map, really misleading? Okay. See, this only shows the 100% owned Cliffs, but we own and share a lot for the larger permit to mine area with you, 50/50. Actually, about a billion tons worth of ore right here at this site, okay? That's about 50% of the available resource on the site. Anyway, my question for you, because we own 50% all of this with you through here, through here, through here, is as a businessman, okay, when Cliffs owns that much iron ore, a billion tons of the resource, all throughout this site, not just the immediate, the immediate permit area that'll be mined in the beginning, but for the whole site, how do you go forward with such a massive investment, almost a billion dollars, when Cliffs owns that much ore in opposition at this point? And the state of Minnesota has already proclaimed, as recently as last month, that they considered Misabi Metallics in violation of their agreement and could pull the leases if they wanted to. With those two factors in mind, how do you go forward with that? And then, you know, well, I'll let you answer that.
So, so here's the thing. There's well-established law and precedent for how you deal with these mineral leases, right? And yeah, there's a lot of disputes and litigation going on over the control of this land. But right now, Misabi Metallics has all the necessary permits to mine that land, and has got a mine plan approved, and has invested literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to mine it. And if Cliffs wants to do something, I suppose they can start the work to start doing that. But, but this hasn't been done to hurt Cleveland Cliffs. In fact, I think Cliffs invested in this after the fact.
You've got another $700 million to invest, okay? These people have heard promises and promises over and over, you know, a project that was either unreasonable for the market at the time, that these promises were being made, all of these things. And I guess my question for all of them is, you know, this is what I hear when I'm on the range. How does this project make any sense, okay? You know, that kind of investment, when you don't own enough ore to pay it all back at a reasonable rate of return, and the state themselves, the regulatory risk that you have, has proclaimed that you're in violation, and they can pull your leases at any time.
No, I never said, I, no, sir, I never said that. I said, you could make a case for that. We'd have to go to court. They could contest that. We'd be tied up in court for at least two years. I never said, we don't have the authority that people seem to believe we have to just yank these leases and give them to somebody else. We don't have that authority.
And I'd flip it a little bit on you there and ask you a question. So if this mine gets developed, right, and you've got multi-generational, high-value jobs, what are you upset about? Why do you care? I mean, I don't know if it's
You asked that question, and I will answer it, okay? Because I think, Governor, you also made a misstatement earlier as well, okay, when you said Cliffs hasn't lost anything, okay? Cliffs and Governor Dayton came to the Range. We had an agreement. They were going to work together, build this out. Lorenzo, we stood together on site. I sat across from you at the dinner table. You said specifically to me, yes, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to tell you again, Lorenzo, that we'll have a deal because I don't want to go back on my word again. You said that, and I was there. Okay, so you know, we made strategic plans around this site. We had engineering. We had all kinds of plans with our customers. We had this, we had this facility ready, like Cliffs has done, time and time again for the people on the Range. We had it ready to bring it back when the market was ready for it. You might say that the electric arc furnace market has been there for decades for Cliffs, but you know, if you've been in this business, that the EAF market really wasn't ready for high-grade, high-grade steels. They didn't, they didn't have that technology until more recently. They haven't, the market hasn't been there, okay? But you, Governor, to say that we haven't lost anything, you know you promised us.
I didn't say you haven't lost anything.
You knew, and you admitted that you went back on your word. And you know
I went back on my word. Let me, let me answer that.
Great.
You know, because my honesty and integrity means a lot to me. And I've spent 40-plus years up here doing every goddamn thing I could to bring jobs to the Iron Range, with one exception, Twin Metals. Everything else I supported, everything else I've done within the defines of the law, what I could. I, when I said that to Lorenzo, it was before they went into bankruptcy, when there was nobody else around, when the market, when a lot of unemployment up here, and it didn't look like there's anybody else around. And I meant it. And I would have proceeded to do so, except they went into bankruptcy. And I don't have any standing in bankruptcy. The state of Minnesota doesn't. The creditors do. And so we had to follow the law. And if Cliffs wants to buy this project, they can buy it. If Cliffs wants to develop all those minerals that they hold leases to now, elsewhere, they can file a permit to mine plan. The permit to mine plan right now that's been approved by DNR is that narrow circle right there. That's what's in the permit to mine. You can't go outside that with the existing permit to mine.
It's 10 years' worth of ore.
Well, they want it. Everybody wants it.
So a couple of points.
Everybody knows when you build a mine, they'll make amendments and amendments and amendments to build out other areas. We own that ore. I'm just asking, Mr., how is that?
So a couple of things. I worked with Cleveland Cliffs probably 13 years ago on iron-making projects to try to get into the electric arc furnace market. So your analysis of the market may not be correct. You know, there's a company that has a steel mill in Indiana that's been making its own iron probably for 15 years, something like that. I'd have to go look at the original years. Could be a little longer. So the market's actually been there for a long time. That's not a bad thing. That's a good thing, right? Everybody's got to get into that market. Now, it's been, if you look globally at the processes to do that, MidRex, HYL, and a lot of ones that have been tried and failed, there, you know, there's paths into that market. That's a good thing. I don't see that being a bad thing. And so I'm not sure where you're coming from on that. And, and in terms of this, I was unaware that Cliffs had owned this property, put a mining plan in place, spent the decades or years and years getting the permits. I never knew that happened, because I don't think it did. So, okay, well, then I misunderstood what you were saying.
We made you keep your plan.
So Cliffs is, Cliffs is in great
Cliffs has never submitted an application for a permit to mine in this area.
So we're talking about a project that hasn't been mined since the 80s, right? Where, well, whatever the reasons. I'm just telling you, it's a giant economic development opportunity for generations.
Is somebody back there? Yes? Somebody bring a microphone over there, please?
Yep. Good evening. Will you go over there? All right. Thank you, Governor.
Good evening, Mr. Heasley, and thank you for coming here to answer questions tonight. The one question I have to answer your question, why the, as you called it hostility towards this project, 5 million tons of pellets, yes, the market is good now. We just came out of recession. People at UTAC were laid off. LTV Steel Mining Company shut down 2001, 7.5 million tons. So when the next downturn comes, is it going to be Hibbing Taconite? Is it going to be UTAC? Is it going to be KeyTAC? You know, when you put this extra tonnage on the market, it is a direct threat to the existing facilities. Facilities, I might add, are represented by the United Steelworkers. They're good-paying jobs. You know, whether it be Cliffs or US Steel, there's a definite concern up here. We've been through it in Babbitt, in Hoyt Lakes, in Aurora. The 5 million tons is a direct threat to us.
Oh, you're absolutely right. And that's the reason when Esther got this whole thing going, they made promises that it was not going to just be Taconite pellets produced. It was going to be value-added. And as Mr. Heasley said, create, take advantage of a new market. You're absolutely right. And that, the Range delegation's expressed that concern to Chippewa and same thing. So I mean, you're absolutely right.
Well, Governor, I agree with you. And we, if they're going to develop a value-added project, that's a wonderful thing. It's the 5 million tons of pellets. We know this is a cyclical industry. We've lived here for many years. I've been in the business almost 28 years. I've seen three layoffs, one permanent. You know, that is a significant threat to us and our lifestyle and our people.
So what is your solution? Do you have the project die?
Our solution was that, we wish the state would have never gotten involved in this. If you take the money you folks have poured into this thing, we could have had DRI at one of the other facilities. You know, KeyTAC, Hibbing Taconite is running out of ore. KeyTAC is probably getting pretty close to the edges of their property. That ore would have been mined. You know, this, this project, the state sponsorship of this project, the government, that money's been poured into it. You know, I guess that's, that's the frustration from the people. The money that's been poured, the good money after bad, the promises that aren't kept, the extensions. It's, and then on top of that. So I wanted to answer your question, sir. Again, thank you for coming and, you know, answering some questions for us.
Yeah, it's always great to hear that perspective, you know, and to understand where you're coming from. And, you know, I don't mean to keep going back to the same thing, but I grew up in a place where they were all USW jobs, right? And they were really high-paying jobs. And people would come out of high school, walk across to the mill, and boy, they'd be in there for the rest of their careers. And they all went away. And the primary reason they went away is because new investments weren't being made. And, and no matter what corporation owns the assets up here, and I'm just speaking not to the project, but to this range and to my personal experience, watching valuable companies go away, you know, during the bad times the steel industry faced, I worked, like I said, on like 10 bankruptcies. I've seen thousands and thousands of jobs saved, but I've also seen situations where the investments weren't made, and the, and the companies went away, and towns were devastated. What this project represents for the Iron Range is a long-term economic opportunity, and it's, you know, it's for you, but really, it's for your children and grandchildren. And in the town I grew up in, all those folks, many of those folks left. Some of them found a way to keep going, but the economic activity never recovered. Here, with this project, decades and decades of high-value jobs. So I understand exactly what you're saying, right there with you. I understand the concern about competition, but remember, no market ever stands still. You've got to move into the future.
What you need to understand
Well, again, we have existing jobs here.
No, the mayor was next. But you need to understand, we've heard that before. You know, you're coming into a situation, not a clean slate. You're coming in where those assurances, promises have been made and haven't been fulfilled. So, Mayor.
And just a note on Hibtech. We are aware that Hibtech is facing, you know, limitations on ore. We've been working with them to look for other state leases if possible. We're also, we also know and are facilitating conversations between they and some private mineral holders, which are closer, would be more practical for the company to utilize. So we're actively trying to help find the resources they need to keep going.
Mayor, then you, sir.
Thank you, Governor. Thanks for coming up and holding this meeting. A lot of things that was said, I was going to say, but I have a couple of questions. If you just give me a couple of minutes. just give me a couple of minutes. First of all, are these jobs gonna be union jobs? Are they gonna be represented by the US Steelworkers Association, Union, or whoever? Are these gonna be union jobs that you're gonna be providing?
Well, you're leaping ahead a little bit. The only jobs we've talked to the unions about so far have been the construction jobs on-site, which I think have been predominantly union in the past, right? I don't see that changing. I don't, I think we have a pre-existing contract that was in place before the bankruptcies, and that has to be probably reinstated. So, their first jobs are the construction jobs. Now, long-term, I know there are union and non-union operations up here. I haven't spent one minute looking at what's gonna happen there, but I don't see why these would go one way or the other. I mean, I think we just have to get at that and figure it out as we move forward and start looking at operations.
Okay, I just wanna say, Cliffs' jobs are union jobs, okay? So-
Is North Shore Union?
No, I'm telling you, United Taconite, where I represent, the place I represent, United Taconite is union jobs, okay?
So, some are and some aren't, then?
Well, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question. My second question is to Commissioner Landworth. You know, a couple of things. First of all, you know, you made a comment that I thought was very poignant. And that is that we could've stopped, set the clock back, and done this over again. Did the state have the opportunity to revoke the leases prior to the bankruptcy?
So, the, it can terminate leases when the lease conditions are not being met. And in the case of Essar, you know, we kept going as long as we thought it was reasonable to go forward. Ultimately realized that this was going nowhere, and we filed to terminate the leases. They filed for bankruptcy the day of that termination. So, the bankruptcy proceedings preempted our termination. So, the leases went into the bankruptcy proceedings.
Okay, I find that it's unfortunate that that occurred. So, the other question I have is for the general purposes of Cliffs Resources, okay? I met with Inland Steel representatives last week. I've met with Lorenzo Gonzalez, the CEO of Cliffs. We have a really good working relationship. I have the trust and faith in him. I don't know anything about your company, Mr. Heasley, with all due respect, but I'm telling you, I know Cliffs Resources. I've worked with them on a regular basis. And I know that many of these mining experts tell me, as a layperson, as the mayor of Virginia, elected officials, whatever that case may be, this is what they tell me. You gotta have the product. You gotta have the expertise, and you have to have the finances to make this project comfortable fruition. You have to have the opportunity to provide jobs for your personnel. You have to have the track record. And I'm telling you, that Cliffs Resources has his track record. And so I stand by Cliffs Resources. I signed the letter to Governor Dayton as part of the Range Mayor's Association through Rams, and I think that that's where I stand. I stand for what I believe in, and I believe Cliffs Resources should have the opportunity, or should've had the opportunity before, to mine these projects. So, Essar's coming in, you got Tom Clark, you got all those kind of things. You spent all those millions and millions of dollars, and if Cliffs would've had that opportunity before, if we were able to terminate those leases prior to that, we wouldn't have had to wait six years. They would've put that mine together, and we would've been operating. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, and to be clear, you know, Cliffs had the opportunity to acquire this in bankruptcy as well. And so they've had every opportunity along the way that anybody else has had to acquire these mineral rights and this permit to mine.
Cliffs did take an opportunity, and we had real money on the table, unlike the other property that's trying to run this right now. I've got a question for you, Mr. Heasley. How much reserve do you have in that current permitted pit?
When you look at the permit area?
How much reserve do you have in that permitted pit? I can tell you if you want, but how much do you have in there?
How much do you think we have?
You have ten years, twenty-five percent of which is controlled by Cliffs, and that's at your nameplate production rate. You just said that you're gonna run this place for decades and decades. How are you going to do that?
Well, I'm not gonna run it for decades and decades, right? This is gonna outlast all of us.
How is your company gonna run it for decades and decades?
Well, you know, as well as anybody, that when these kinds of investments are made, they run for many, many years. So, we've got a mining plan, we've got permits in place.
How?
You're asking me to answer a question for twenty years from now? Tell you what-
With what reserve? I'll ask it differently. With what reserve?
Well, we've got a mine plan, it's permitted. If you wanna get into the twenty-year plans, I can't do that for you.
I wanna get into the ten-year plan, of which you have seven and a half years on a billion-dollar investment.
All right, you know, it's an interesting question. Bill, you wanna jump in on this? You've spent far more time than I.
Can that permit mine? Can I take a microphone, please, sir? So, this area has more than ten years of mineable. It has fourteen at least.
How many tons? Crude tons?
That's at seven million tons of pellets.
Yes.
Twenty-one four-fifty million tons of crude per year.
Right, how many tons do you have in there?
I told you that we had fourteen.
You have two-hundred-and-forty million tons in there. Two-hundred-and-forty million tons. There's a two-billion-ton resource there. You have two-hundred-and-forty million tons permitted. We're waiting six years for that? Governor, I have a question for you. Has Cleveland Cliffs ever burned you?
No, they haven't burned me. I think they've spread a lot of misinformation about the current situation.
What misinformation?
That we could just pick this thing up and hand it over to them tomorrow. That's not true.
I didn't, we didn't ask to be handed it tomorrow, we wanted it two years ago. If we had it two years ago, we'd be four years from opening.
If they hadn't gone into bankruptcy, we would have other options.
You guys still made a decision coming out of bankruptcy to hand the lease back to Masabi Metallics, correct?
No.
Well, then what was all of that?
The leases went into bankruptcy as part of the package, a part of the deal, whose owner was Essar, who filed for bankruptcy. And that's sent suddenly in the hands of a federal judge under federal law. And we didn't have the right at that point to take those leases back.
Well, then what were all those stipulations for that they had to meet?
After the judge awarded to Chippewa-
Then they had stipulations, which you said they met, even though they didn't meet them, right?
I said that is something that we'd have to go to court to try to prove. I have doubts in my own mind. I was frustrated as anybody else here. I wish this were clear-cut. I wish the ownership were clear-cut. I wish they were underway full-bore construction tomorrow. But they're not, you know? All the questions and criticism about the current situation are absolutely valid. But the question is, what is the alternative?
Well, so in six years, when Masabi Metallics is not running this, and they've run back to wherever country they came from, where, how much money is the state going to have made on this?
State's not gonna make any money.
Right. Thank you.
So, just a-
Well, that's not completely correct. The state will get royalties even if they have not constructed the plant. That's part of what I was mentioning before.
What if they go bankrupt?
So, summarizing what I'm hearing, and this is really interesting to hear, because I have not been exposed to your thinking before. But you gotta recognize that you've got a couple of complaints, then. One is that you'd like a different corporation to own the project. Okay, I mean, it's your employer, and you'd like your employer to grow. No one took it from them, right? There have been multiple opportunities to invest. Cliffs is a great company with plenty of resources and could've done that at any time over the last thirty years. I don't know why they didn't, and it is what it is. You want the project to last for many decades, right? Or more than twenty years, or whatever you're saying, but you don't want it to operate, right? It's gotta go one way or the other. So, I understand that you would like your company to own it. I don't know why your company didn't buy it, and I can't deal with any of that. That's history, right? The mission now is very simple. Let's build this project, start mining, and create some jobs. And from your perspective, then, if it doesn't work in six years, apparently you wouldn't care, right? So, I don't, so the hostility and the passion, I understand better now, but I think it may be misplaced. Look, here's the bottom line. Let's get this thing built, right? Let's get into the market and go, right?
Start spending money now, then? Okay, back to the whole story here. First question is where Town Hall. Cleveland Cliffs owns our area of this property. Where is their representative to the board up here right now, this Town Hall meeting? Is this not about Cleveland Cliffs, too, or not?
No.
No? Not about us at all?
Well, what we came here tonight to talk about was the Masabi Metallics plan and show you the Masabi Metallics' ownership. And by virtue of the ownership, they have a majority ownership in the pit.
Okay. Cleveland Cliffs has also asked the DNR to remove, or remove Masabi Metallics from the area at least, and the DNR has not responded back to them. What is the status on that?
Well, there's kind of a couple of questions there. We cannot remove Masabi Metallics from the lease, okay? I think you just said that, remove Masabi Metallics from the property and the lease. Masabi Metallics owns fifty percent of the area in yellow. And Cleveland Cliffs, or Cliffs owns the other fifty percent. That's their ownership. They own that. We cannot, we cannot remove them from that ownership.
I'm talking about the portions that are fifty-fifty leased.
I'm sorry?
The portions that are fifty-fifty leased.
That's the yellow area on the map? That's the fifty-fifty lease? That means that fifty percent is owned by Cliffs, fifty percent is owned by Masabi Metallics. Under state law, that gives them the right to go before a judge and get the right to mine it and then to share the profits back with the second owner. We don't have any authority over whether or not they have that right.
Masabi Metallics is going to court that, ask for that.
Correct. And the blue, much of the blue is the state lease. Some of that, there's private lease in there as well, but that's a hundred percent controlled by Masabi Metallics right now. The red is that area which is a hundred percent controlled by Cliffs. But again, that is in litigation right now with the district court.
Third question is about USW standing. Mr. Tom Clark signed an agreement with USW to create USW jobs. I'm asking you right now, no questions asked, yes or no, are those jobs at whatever mine becomes of it gonna be USW?
So-
No dancing around, yes or no?
So, I think what Tom Clark signed, I believe, was a neutrality agreement.
No, I said, no dancing around, yes or no?
I'm not dancing. I'll give you a straight answer, right? That's what I do.
Okay.
All right? I think what Tom Clark signed is a neutrality agreement, correct?
Correct.
All right, so you know what happens after that, right? Then a project is built, people are hired, and there's an organization-
Okay, the question is fine, then. Are you gonna honor that neutrality agreement that Tom Clark signed?
Sure. I don't think there's, it's, that's not optional, right? That's in there. And, you know, by way of history, I've done some work with unions in the past and had some pretty good outcomes. I mean, if you look, again, when the industry was really on its back, the union was one of the key groups that helped bring it back to life. If you look at what they did and the way they came at those challenging times, they were just a critical element of saving the industry. So, I've got no beef with the union, right? But, yeah, agreement's been signed, and that neutrality agreement, and now we've gotta move forward.
Correct. We're just making sure that's still in effect.
May I just add one thing in answer to the gentleman's question? Because it's something that's been misreported several times, which is that the Department of Natural Resources has not responded to Cleveland Cliffs' requests for a permit transfer. So, Cleveland Cliffs has asked us to do one of three things with the existing permit to mine. Either transfer it, terminate it, or modify it. We've looked at statute and rule. We cannot either terminate that agreement or transfer it on the request of a party who is not on the permit. And we have, in fact, on two occasions, communicated that back to the company, to Cleveland Cliffs. We can modify the permit if needed in order to reflect changes on the ground with the permit holder, Masabi Metallics. And we have indicated that we will look at that and make the changes that may be necessary based on changed real estate control in the area. That is not a short or a simple process, but that is something we have said we will look at.
Yes, I'm John Johnson. I have a question for Mr. Heasley, and then I have just a few comments I'd like to make. First of all, what does Masabi Metallic experience in taconite mining? And two, would you be willing to sell it to Cliffs, the property?
So, Masabi Metallics is a startup company, right? So, you know what that means. There's a tremendous amount of knowledge on this Iron Range. There are decades and decades of history. So, yeah, in our team, our core team, we have a huge amount of knowledge of everything from construction to environmental, to safety, on into operating mines. We've got a lot of depth there. To really create this as a new company, we're gonna be hiring more and more people over time. So, you know, as this project moves forward, we will build that team that will then be able to drive this company in the future. So, that's the answer on that question.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what was your second question?
And then, would you be willing to sell your rights to Cliffs?
Well, two things there. One is, you know, again, I don't know why Cliffs has never really, you know, since like the mid-eighties, and given their presence in the region, I don't have any idea why they haven't done this. So, that's not a discussion that's going on now. We are talking to a new investor. That new investor has an exclusivity. We're gonna move forward with them, and I think Cliffs has made it pretty clear they have no interest in playing any role with this company. So, I just, you know, I don't have the history. I'm just here to try to push this thing forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess my comment is, is that, you know, I've been a lifelong Ranger here. I've worked thirty-nine years at Hibbing Taconite, and I've seen over the years, you know, we've had all these promises of Endotronics and Chopsticks factories, and they started, they were gonna have this mill here, and we were gonna have a direct reduction mill and a steel mill. And now, down to ten years later, all we have is another taconite mine. And, well, we got a perfectly good taconite mine, you know, fifteen miles north of here that would love to have this ore, you know? So, I guess, you know, looking back, I think back about Cliffs, you know, why they didn't buy this twenty years ago. They had deep pockets, they bought coal mines, they bought Canadian mines, they bought Australian mines, and they all went bust. And now, Mr. Gonclavis finally saw the light, and he starts gonna invest in the people that are, you know, make the money around here, you know? And so, and I applaud him for getting rid of all of that stuff. And now, he's made a commitment to keep the North American steel industry alive. And he's demonstrated that time and time and time again with the Nugget's Mine in Ohio, which we could've had, you know? And now, we're here again, waiting for this thing to get going, you know? And it's just dragging on. It seems like you and Cliffs both have some skin in this game, you know? And so, either you guys should either partner up and let's get this baby going, or, and then the other thing of it is, is what's gonna happen to Hibbing Taconite? You know, they've got a short amount of ore left. You know, all you're gonna do is close down Hibbing Taconite and create a new taconite company, you know? There's eight hundred jobs there that are gonna be lost. So, those are my comments and my concerns, so I thank you for listening.
Hi, Governor. I'm Harlan Tardy. I'm a lifelong resident. I grew up right on this spot. I played baseball, hockey, right here in Cloverdale. And I've spent my entire life, about thirty-three years, as a school board member at Nashua And I spent my entire life, around 33 years, as a school board member at Nashua Q1. I was there when Butler closed in the mid 80s, and we lost half of our student population virtually overnight, and the nightmares that came with that. I'm a strong supporter of the iron range, I've been in community service, supporting the entire iron range all my life. And there's a lot at stake here, there's a lot of compassion, as we've all heard. You know, I'm not trying to jump on the bandwagon either way, but we have a tachonite plant not far from here that has a shortage of ore. Is there anything on all of branch that can come out of this night, Governor? I'm asking you, where we can, I know the permitting, I know the bureaucracy, I've been inside, I've worked with state government, I've worked with you hundreds of times on trying to solve problems to better serve the people of the iron range. Is there any olive branch that can be handed out for these permitting processes? You know, Butler Tachonite was there all those years, had the permits. 10 years ago, they come in and they have, they got the permits. The permits are there now, the same land that Cleveland Cliffs is looking at has all been permitted before. I just don't understand why the bureaucracy is such, so tough, that they can't cut those seven, eight years down? Because we all know the market will change, it's cyclical, the mining industry, I've been around here and seen it suffer year after year after year. I've seen it through my father, my brother, my sons, I've watched them all come through that system. And we're not even looking at a Nugget plant at the end of this? I mean, another pellet plant is only going to, in the market now, might be fine, but I didn't even hear a commitment as to where those pellets would go. They're going to go on the market, they're going to go on the market, they're going to compete with everything that Key Tech, U-Tech, Cliffs, it's going to compete. Cliffs needs ore. Is there anything possible that you can work on to try to cut that permitting process down and throw all of branch out there and let metallics do their thing?
Well, I can't, first of all, I'm as frustrated as, well, probably not as frustrated as any of you, that's not, I don't live here. But I was there with Rudy Purpich when Butler shut down, and walked into the high school auditorium with 500 people, hoping and praying that he could come up with something, did the same with Paul Wellstone LTV. These are very real, affect people's lives drastically. To keep this industry going, keep what we have now, is got to be a number one priority. If the intent is to take the resources that are part of the mineral leases there and use those as a source, additional source of ore for Hibbing Tachonite, then, I mean, that's what I honestly believe is what Cliffs really has in mind. That's, you know, that's one way to go with it. It's not in our power right now to convert that, because Masabi owns the project that exists, and they have, they're saying they want to go ahead with it, but, you know, that's a valid Plan B. If we had gone before they filed for bankruptcy, we would have had the discretion to make some of those decisions. Essar, one of the other ways, you know, I won't forgive Essar for a lot of things, lying to my face on a Skype call for one, but when they jumped, we gave proper notice, as we had to do legally, about our intent to withdraw the leases, and they jumped into bankruptcy. Just shows what sleazy operators they've been all along.
Yeah, but yet they're a potential partner money-wise in the project. That hurts about here, that really hurts. I mean, they picked our pockets, Governor.
That was, yes he did, and I don't know what the backroom deal is, I'm told they want to buy their creditors out there, other creditors who are owed, I don't know, hundreds of millions of dollars of debt. I'm told they want to buy that, some of that debt from those creditors at a discount rate, and then hope when the project succeeds, they'll get repaid. They're not going to operate, you say that? Or my dead body, they won't operate, and, you know, but the financial part of this is out in a different stratosphere, but if they're going to put, whoever's going to make it happen financially is, as long as they stay out of the operation.
I won't belabor this, Governor, and I thank you for coming and being before us, but this was mining land for 100 years. This is Butler, this was old Hannah Mining, this was, the history's there. The entire area is mining land. It has been permitted over and over and over, I bet you a gazillion times it's been looked at. I just don't, in my view, understand why it just has to be partialled out so metallics can get the whole say-so and the job. This other land is just as important to keep and maintaining these other jobs just over here to the east. Those jobs and those jobs are going to go away when that ore runs out unless there's a rabbit pulled out of the hat. So, you know, I know it's a bureaucracy, I know there's laws, there's all those kind of things, and I'm not into those things, but that's mining land, it's been mining land for 100 years.
And again, I'm not privy to negotiations between Cliffs and Masabi Metallics. I know with Mr. Clark, he said he wanted, was willing to share that 50/50 ownership, the yellow parts there, whether they could work it out, Cliffs owns 50, the rights of 50% of that, and I don't know how much of that, of the total deposits is in those lands. The map that shows, where's the larger map that has all the, in orange there, that shows what Cliffs owns. Again, if they want to mine that, they can apply for a permit to mine. No, they just apply for a permit to mine. Well, I'm sorry, that's what state law requires, you know?
Well, two things if I could add to that. One is that, as I mentioned, we are working with Hibtech on finding additional resources, both on state land, and they've got some private leases, some private mineral rights as well that they may have some access to them. We're hopeful with that, but... I think they got, you better talk to your staff.
We've got a few people working on some small areas that, we need a big area for Hibtech. We've got five years left, Q1 of 2025, that property is out of ore. And 90-day, 120-day extensions aren't going to do it any good. We need something significant there.
And I think, we're working with Arslar and US Steel.
That's who you're working with, not with Hibtech or Cliffs.
That is what, and I believe it is, what Cliffs wants to legitimately sow, is to have the access to that body of ore there, complete for, not for building a Essar, son of Essar plant, but to transfer to Hibbing Tachonite, that's perfectly legitimate, that should be on the table.
And secondly, to your earlier point, if a company comes in with an amendment to a permit to mine that expands the mine, existing mine operation, that is a much shorter process than a brand spanking new permit to mine. So there are options for companies to get access to ore faster than a six or seven-year process in a permit to mine.
I have just one question to expand on the question about the business model here. And you're talking about not having a blast furnace ready to take these pellets, you don't have a customer. And I've been involved with shipping ore through the Great Lakes, trying to ship them to overseas, and the expense of that, when times are really good, it's effective. When five or six million tons of additional pellets come on the market, right now, the iron ore balance, the tachonite pellet balance in the blast furnace, that is well-developed right now, and there isn't any margin on either side. Arslar Middle, Arslar Mattel, US Steel, and Cliffs, that's very, very well imbalanced in the States. I'd like to know who really you plan on selling pellets to? When the market is hot as it is now, you may be able to make a small margin, otherwise you're depleting the resources in Minnesota. Shipping these pellets overseas to an offshore company, and we still, the margin would be so small, I don't know how you would possibly invest in this project without just bringing additional iron ore into the US market that's not needed right now.
Hi, my name is Catherine Lane, I'm from Buell. I was one of those people that went away a long time ago, and am kind of back. My question is for you at Masabi Metallica, if you'd be willing to share that information with us, what is your operating capital right now?
So you realize we're not in operations, right? So, I'm not exactly sure what you're specifically asking.
You're not in operations, okay.
Okay, we're...
What is your debt load right now as a company?
Sorry?
What is your debt load right now as a company?
So, to your point, this is a private business, and we don't disclose all these things, there's some debt that came out of the bankruptcy.
Okay.
Some of that was the result of negotiations with prepetition creditors, right? I think that's known to be about 300 million.
Okay, that's about what's reported.
And then there was some other prepetition exposures for what you'd call mechanics lanes, right, people that have mechanics lanes, done work on site, and those have all been paid.
Okay. What amount are you looking to raise? And where, I realize you said that you have an exclusive, I believe the reports up here is that it's with Mercuria or Essar Steel?
So it's, the name of the company is Mercuria?
Mercuria, sorry.
And they began looking at the credit facility coming in that way, and then came in and said we'd rather buy equity? So, that's what they're doing now, is looking at how to play in that and make sure they make the best move.
And how much would it be to actually get your project up running?
Well, you know, I, so I'm not, I can't talk about what Mercuria is doing right now and what their numbers are going to be.
Understood, let's take them.
But if you look at the credit facility, that's a $650 million facility.
Okay, would we be in a position where we would have up here a facility that is ready to be run with $650 million with an equity investment?
It's not equity, that would be debt. The equity that's brought in is a little over 200 mil...
That would be debt, no.
No, so there's a credit facility, right? This is the credit facility that was signed at the end of June. I think that's been widely discussed publicly as being a $650 million facility. The equity piece that has come in so far is more, is in excess of 200 million, right? There's more equity coming in, right, there's some more equity to bring in, but, you know, you got to look at all that. So, to your point, right, I think your real point is...
Do you have enough to get up and running?
Is the plan intact? So, you know, looking at the budgets that we have now, the project is sufficiently capitalized to move forward. Now, we've got to do all the right things, we've got a lot of work left to do, so, you know, we'll tell you more as we've got, as frankly as I've been in this deeper, and we've gotten through some of the more detailed work that has to be completed, and we'll come back and talk again.
Okay. Governor Dayton, you mentioned that you didn't have a very nice Skype conversation with the people from Essar, and I really appreciate your frankness and your honesty in that, because I think all of us sitting in this room pretty much wondered what was going on. And I am somebody who did a lot of work internationally, and there's one country and there's one firm that keeps coming up time and again in this whole thing, and I'm just wanting to ask, are we aware of this, or is this even important? Mercuria recently has gone before, I believe it was within the last year, to do a deal with, I think it's Venezuela, to buy out some project that the Russians invested in, several billions of dollars. And I'm just wondering, I know they were invested, you know, throughout the United States and that, so that might not be a big issue, but that is through a company that has been sanctioned. And I just wonder if you're aware of, if they've gotten their approval on that? And then secondly, also Essar Steel, although they have no connections necessarily with Russia, Essar Oil does. They're in a joint venture with that same company, Rosneft. And in fact, after, after there was all these problems up here, Russia went into a really nice deal with the Indians and with Essar to buy a large portion of their oil company because their holding was doing so poorly at the time. So I guess I'm just wondering, are you aware in the due diligence, I suppose you can't talk about it, but the Mercuria deal, where do they stand with their approval? Because they won't be able to invest necessarily, will they, Mr. Dayton? If they don't get any type of approval from that, and, you know, where does that stand, I guess, here in Minnesota for this project? Is that a big obstacle?
Those are very good questions, I don't have the answer, you know a lot more about the international money markets than I do. You know, Tom, you have a project here that was half-built, then left, and you're trying to get people to finance, it's moving forward. I know that Tom Clark tried to get, you mentioned Chase Manhattan, you mentioned a couple other Wall Street firms, as people he had gone to, was hopeful that they might make the investment and also issue the debt, and I'm just guessing here, but my reading is that they declined to do so. So, you know, I mean, I think whoever was trying to move this forward is, was, has been forced to move into international money markets, which is a whole complexity beyond what I understand. But, you know, if financing is there, and that's, I mean, cash is cash and debt is debt, and if those are going to go forward, I think it's less, and there's no operating control, I mean, it's really of concern, but it's like, well, who else is there? And Mercuria at this point is not bought into the project, they're looking at, they're doing their due diligence, you know, but at this point, the owner is Dubai. And, you know, I mean, I wish it were a US bank, but, you know, that's just not the option that's available. Well, that's what they're putting together, the 650 million. They represented that they had it.
For clarity. Right. So, a couple of things. So, the company's been investing in construction now for about 15 months, so that's been ongoing on the site, albeit at a relatively low level, but in critical path investments that are going to be important in moving the project forward. So, it makes sense, right? The 200 million that they've invested, again, some of it went to prepetition claims and things that really had to do with the past and not so much the future, but it was important that they put hundreds of millions of dollars, and over these years, I know it's been painful, but they've put hundreds of millions of dollars into local economy, which I'm quite certain has benefited everybody, it had to, right? Now, going forward, that 650 is a credit facility, right? So, we could talk more about that later, but you look at how credit facilities work, and you've got to do some things that then access them, and then you set it up. So there's been, there has been steady construction on site for some time. So, the deadlines that are out there, I'm aware of these deadlines, you know, we're looking at them. The key that I'm focused on right now, not necessarily, no. I mean, there are penalties if the project isn't in place by the end of 2019, making pellets, there are penalties, financial penalties associated with that. I know that benefits the state a little bit, right? But the real goal here is to get this thing up and running. So, you know, we'll check in later with you, and we are really, we'll continue to talk about the schedule going forward, so you can keep it a loop, if that's your concern. Well, there has been a lot of work done on this, it's, there's actually, permits are in place. All the permits are for an HYL product, HYL facility? I'm sure you're aware of that, right? Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, I've got a question for Metal and Bear. There, your business or your company out there that you're making and you're building, now, all this metal that's come from Essar has been proven substandard. So as a concerned person, for safety, the bolts that they brought in have snapped, all right? The iron workers have said the bolts are substandard. So now, we're going to go and build this project with all this junk metal that came from Essar, India, okay? So what is the guarantee we have for the safety of the people that are going to be working there?
So, you know, I haven't seen any bolts snapping, right? But I can tell you that, as you know, in construction, there's a lot of quality assurance and quality control processes that are put in place, so these will be, it'll look at, nobody's going to be building anything with substandard bolts.
Well, their, the person that was inspecting that was from Essar, and he just went, wrote it off, no problem, no problem, no problem. So, I think that we should really have a look at what that building is going to be like for the people, okay? I know the stairways aren't up to code already, I know that.
That's very good, very good advice, and I trust you'll take that up here to somebody we can trust to do that kind of inspection. You're absolutely right, safety comes first.
Yeah, no doubt.
My question is for Gary Heasley. I've been following the bankruptcy through Essar. When I look on there, on the docket, it always says Essar, AKA Masabi Metallics. Why did they change their name to Masabi Metallics? That's my first question. They didn't get bought out by Masabi, they got renamed, and my question is why?
Yeah, I have not followed the dockets like that, I wasn't around for the bankruptcy, I don't know, you know, the way this works, a company called Chippewa was formed, Chippewa actually owns Masabi Metallics, that's the way it's organized. So I'm not sure, if you have a specific docket, send it to me, I'll read it.
It's in bankruptcy court, it's all over, it's, every docket that's out there says Essar, AKA Masabi Metallics. Why did they change your name? That's my question. Why change it from Essar to Masabi Metallics?
Yeah, I don't know about name change, I really don't have the history, and truth be told, I haven't spent any time going back and reading all of this, the whole bankruptcy docket, as you know, those will be thousands of pages. docket, as you know, those will be thousands of pages. We're really looking much more on the future and how to move forward. So if you've got something specific you want me to read and you send it in, I'll try to take a look at it.
Well, in those dockets, Essar, AKA Masabi Metallics, had the opportunity to pay for Glacier Park leases and land, and they didn't. If they were serious about this property, to me, that was less money than they paid the contractors. I don't understand why they didn't pay that, that's why Cliffs has it today. So can you tell me why they did not pay Glacier Park?
No, I think that all predates my involvement, I'm not sure, you know, I know that they had obligations to pay the creditors, and they made payments, and the rest of it, it's history, I don't know.
Hi, my, my name's Jesse Dunsmore, I'm a land professional with Cleveland Cliffs. My question's for Commissioner Landwear. In 2016, the state gave advance notice of termination to Essar, allowing Essar to file bankruptcy and tie the leases up. During the bankruptcy, the other major landowner, Glacier Park, they successfully extracted themselves and monetized their land with a credible party with Cliffs. When I listen to everyone tonight in the questions and the line of answers, my analysis is the project's going to go bankrupt again. And I'm, I'm good at being objective, I can take a step back and I can look at it, and the reasons why I say that is, one, there's no real customer. If you're actually targeting EAFs, you don't really need a Swiss commodity trader to drive down to Ohio or Indiana and talk to the EAFs. There's no real financing, it's a, it's a credit line that, you know, yeah, you just said there's strings attached, they don't really have the money in the bank. You know, the team is small, you need a huge team to pull off a project like this. They, they lost control of their property, 50% of the resource they lost control of, they lost control of significant lands they needed for permits, lost control of critical infrastructure for the project. There've been four different CEOs in three years by my count, but I'm starting to lose track. The, the plans change all the time, and they don't really make sense, they're moving, they're building this, then they're building that, and they're going down to Indiana and back, and, you know, and there's been little to no progress. You know, I've monitored construction, and it's, you know, a couple guys go out looking for a beam, and it takes them forever because nothing's labeled, there's no plans, they pick up the beam, they haul it to the crane, they lift it up, they put one beam in place, and then they move on to the next beam, it's one beam at a time right now. And if they had the money and they needed to be done by 2019, they'd be moving. The equipment's been sitting out too long, it's junk now. So when you look through that list, you go, if I'm a lessor, if I'm the state, I want to rent my property to someone that's good, that's going to pull off the project, going to pay the bills, and you look down that list and you go, that's not Masabi Metallics. And so, so my question is, you know, when you're doing your analysis on who you're going to lease to, when are you going to face that reality that, you know, even if it's going to take longer, the best path is to move on to a credible party instead of a startup company, where they said they're still trying to build the company just tonight? And then two, when you finally face that reality, that it's going to go bankrupt, and you're better off finding a good credible party that's got the, that has the money, has the markets, how are you going to prevent the leases from being tied up in bankruptcy again, the same move pulled on you again?
Let me, let me go to the last question first, and how are we going to prevent the leases from going into bankruptcy? We have, we have shielded the leases so that they are, they are not going to go into bankruptcy if the company goes bankrupt. This time, we have a way to get out of that. Again, the, the process for leasing is a statutory process that is laid out in law, we cannot violate that. I mean, that protects, in this case, Masabi Metallics, but it protects Cliffs as well from us doing, you know, ad hoc things to leases that people have some expectation they're going to have for a long period of time. So there is, it is a very deliberate, prescriptive statutory process to do leases. The bankruptcy court decided that Masabi Metallics should get the leases because they looked at what Cliffs provided, and they looked at what Masabi Metallics provided, and they said, this is where it should go. We don't have any say over that. The leases go with the project.
You decided that they were the best bid, but you had the opportunity to extract your leases like Glacier Park did, saying, you know, we were going to give them so much time to come through with the money, and if they don't want an added amount of time, we're out of here. And instead, it was extension after extension, and did everything to get a party in there that wasn't a credible counterparty.
We did not have the opportunity to extract our leases from bankruptcy. We made, we made the plea to the court that we should be able to extract those leases from bankruptcy because that we had filed for termination of those leases.
Which if the leases would be automatically rejected-
There, there was language that the leases would be automatically rejected if certain terms weren't met, and they weren't met, but extensions were provided to avoid that event.
We, we extended the leases while Essar was still at the head of the project in the hopes that they would ultimately come to, to complete the project. When it became clear they could not, we are required to give them a notice that the termination is coming. We're required by statute to tell them that your termination is coming in 30 days if you don't cure the situation here. And then we terminated, but of course, they knew the termination was coming, they filed for bankruptcy right before. This is just the legal process that we can't circumvent.
So, so you've said that theoretically you have rights to terminate the leases at this point, given that you have doubts about the actual financing, the actual of-take agreements. So, and then it doesn't sound like there's a lot of commitment, when, if obligations aren't met in 2019, 2018 to actually pull the leases, why is that? Why, why continue down the same path?
What I said is there are two conditions that are in our leases that allow for us to terminate. One is if they don't complete the construction of the pellet plant by the end of 2019, and the second is if they don't ship at least 3 million tons of pellets by 2020.
Will you extend?
I'm not going to be here.
I'm not going to be here either.
We, we will, and we want to take on the project, and we want to get it done.
One of you wants to be the commissioner, apply for the dang job, it's great.
Well, 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 sir.
If we show everything, Garrett won't be here either, he'll be number, he'll be number five, six, or seven.
I'd just like to say, I've been in this business for 43 years, I don't have as much experience maybe as Mr. Heasley or anything about pellets or anything, maybe 75, 80,000 hours I'm making them. I agree with Mr. Latendus, you know, everything he said, and this guy here is a hard act to follow, he's got it right down. But, you know, you go back in history to like Reserve, you know, Cliffs bid on Reserve, and I think Cypress outbid him. Look how that turned out. Here's what happened, Cypress came in, non-union outfit, I don't believe anything that that Clark said. He was, he was the greatest thing that came to mankind here a few weeks ago, now he's a bum. But, he signed a piece of paper saying it was going to be union, I'll tell you what happened with Cypress. The state brought up a non-union company from Colorado, I think it was, took over Reserve, outbid Cliffs again, because Cliffs, you know, they're a value-added bid, you know. A few years later, bankrupt, Cliffs takes over. You know, I think Cypress invested like 34 million into it, and eventually bankrupt, like these guys are going to do, and Cliffs ended up with it. Non-union, you know, that's neither here nor there as far as the workers go, I mean, they had the opportunities to go union after that, but I'm just saying, I wouldn't believe anything that that Clark promised. You know, these guys did for, which I don't think they're going to open up, there's no guarantee they're going to be union, it'd be just like Cypress. And Cliffs didn't make North Shore non-union, Cypress did, and they were brought up just like these guys. And there, Cliffs got screwed again, and they're getting screwed here this time. It's just a little history lesson, I mean, it just seems to me we're going to repeat this right back, we're going to come right back around full circle, and we're going to have another Reserve, another North Shore. I know it's running and everything, but these guys are going to go bankrupt, and Cliffs is going to end up with it. The only trouble is, everybody here in Nashwauk and everything is going to get screwed because it's just going to take more years, more time, and it's going to be all drawn out, but I'll tell you, Lorenzo's the guy, you know, he's suing you, he's suing. I mean, the guy is, we've all said it, this man said it, you said it, the guy is no dummy. He's not suing for the hell of it. He knows, he's got something, he didn't bring litigation for no reason at all.
Oh, I just talked, okay. Well, I had just had one question to follow up on what Jesse was saying. Did the governor, or did the state and the range delegation put a letter into the bankruptcy court supporting Masabi Metallics in the bid?
Give her, give her a microphone, please. She's my, she's my top advisor.
Well, I think Senator Tom Asoni is in here too, so he might remember.
What you might be talking about is when, when we were in bankruptcy, we talked with, when Masabi Metallics made the bid, but before the judge had approved it, we worked with them on getting better lease terms. So we got very, very good lease terms in that final bankruptcy proceeding. The judge could have ruled in the absence of those, in which case we would not have gotten the better terms, but because we worked with them ahead of time because they agreed to those terms, the bankruptcy judge took those terms and approved that. So it was, it was, it was not so much a letter of support, but it was a list of additional conditions that they were willing to agree to.
But to answer your question, I didn't, I didn't know who Mr. Clark was until the bankruptcy court, I don't think anybody knew who he was, and no, and I certainly didn't know that he was coming forward with a, with a bid, it came out as a complete surprise. So I can say emphatically, no, we did not write a letter to the judge asking that they would be awarded, as Commissioner said, after they were awarded, that we weighed in on things that we wanted to improve in terms of the leases.
Well, that's not true, Governor, that's not true, the range delegation tried to literally supporting Masabi Metallics, I know that's not true.
Well, I didn't. I'll have to give them a chance to speak for themselves.
Yeah, well, I seem to remember the, I know you guys were trying to pull your leases out of court, and that went on, and that was in support of your agreement with Cliffs. And then something changed along that process, we're not sure what that is, but that's what Lorenzo's talking about, when he feels like the state turned around and went a different direction from their agreement with Cliffs. So I just want to clarify that, because I, I'm pretty sure I can dig that out somewhere because I make a habit of keeping an eye on these things.
I stand corrected, but I, I did not sign a letter because I didn't know that Tom Clark and his operation existed, until after the bankruptcy court judge made his decision. I mean, I might have learned a day or so before, but, you know, we were not directly involved in that.
Well, I appreciate the response. I want to just make a comment about the room. Obviously, a lot of people have talked about the compassion in this room, and specifically our employees who are very loyal to Cliffs and to Lorenzo Goncalves. As you know, Lorenzo has been up here many times over the past six months. He's the only CEO who was in the room when Dennis McDonough came up here to deal with the steel import crisis. He was the only CEO of a mining company up here who sat at the table with you. He knows many of the people in this room by your names. He knows who you are, and you all know that. He contributes generously to the communities around here. At issue is not who bought what, who bid, it's about the agreement between the state and Masabi Metallics. You showed us the terms for that agreement, for the state's minerals, which are owned by the people of Minnesota. Do you honestly, Governor, think that Masabi Metallics will complete construction of a plant by the end of next year?
I don't know. You know, this is, I mean, I wish the situation were different from what it is, but it is what it is. And so, what is the state's option, given that it's owned by Masabi Metallics, they indicated they're going to proceed, they've got certain conditions they have to meet, which will take effect after, take place after I left? You know, if they don't, if they're, if they fail, it goes into bankruptcy, or if it just collapses in a heap, you know, then the leases are up presumably again for somebody to bid and take those leases and use them to feed other operations.
Sure.
And maybe that's, you know, that's what some people want, and maybe that's what most people here want, but that, that's not a legal option we have right now. We can't just say, well, you know, we sorry, we're going to bail out of this. We didn't make the decision to Chipewa and now Masabi Metallics. We were not involved in that decision. The court did, because they got a $250 million bid and a $100 million bid, and they took the 250. Because the other creditors were not state, but who had that, whatever, somebody estimated 300 million, that invested, they, they're the ones who had weight with the bankruptcy court judge, because they're the ones who had money on the table.
But, but if we're talking about where we're at right now, you know that they're not, I mean, unless a leprechaun lives out in Masabi Metallics, they're not going to have a pellet plant done by the end of next year. And my question is for the people in this room. Do you want the state to give this new entity, run now by Mr. Gary Heasley, the time to get it done, which is going to be an extension, Governor? Or is it time to take the risk, the state to take the risk and move on? What do you think? He wants the feedback, give him the feedback.
Hello, my name is Annie, and I'm not a minor, and I'm not a lawyer or lobbyist, but I do work in the joyful business of education, and I serve as elementary school principal at Key Watten, where lots of your kids go to school. And this, this community is amazingly resilient and supportive of our schools. Our firefighters give us thousands of dollars every year, firefighters. Police departments help us too. I am asking if you, so if the end game is prosperity and quality of life for our communities, are you willing to partner with our schools and with our local communities to really improve quality of life, which starts with education?
Well, I put, I put over $2 billion additional money into education.
I believe you, Governor, I'm wondering if the man sitting next to you is also of that persuasion.
I don't have any, I don't have any more legislative sessions, I don't have any more money, but I've done my best.
You've got one more.
Hello, my name's Mike Kuf, I just got a quick question for Mr. Heasley. It's just technical, so no. The thing I was wondering is, so you're going to have a, kind of a small operation in terms of tonnage, 4.2 million tons a year, right? And you're going to have all your fixed infrastructure, so based on what everybody, so based on whatever all the other mines are doing around here, you're probably going to be at 60, probably 65 bucks a ton. You get it down to Duluth, and you're going to transload it a few times through the canals for another 25, that brings us to 90. Then I know from Septile over to Europe, it's 15, so you're at 105. Is Riverdale going to try to keep them in, or if they're going over to, you know, Europe, you're at $105 a ton, and you're competing against Brazil with giant, you know, the Brazil Max class, and all, oh, sorry, Valet class ships, which are, I mean, how, I know Riverdale isn't yours, but I mean, what is your confidence in somebody when they have that high of a price to jump over?
Yeah, so it's really hard to look forward and see what the market conditions will be when we enter the market, right? And of course, we'll have a ramp up, and it'll take some time, and all of that. We're going to build the plant, right? It'll be a lower cost operation than some, and from that, it should be able to at least compete. But we'll, we'll see, and we'll talk some more about the future operating plans and so on when we get there. And, you know, I now understand much more clearly, I didn't know that Cliffs had such a problem at Hibtech, that was news to me. And now that I understand that, that changes things a bit, right? I now understand your passion, but, yeah, well, and we'll, we'll have another discussion to go through.
Mr. Heasley's been on the job for what, three weeks?
About three, yeah.
So, I mean, no, no, let's give some other people a chance here, yep.
I'm Mike Seversroot, I am the president of Iron Range Building Trades. We got a lot of construction around the area that we need to get done out there. And this meeting here is the path that unfortunately, we're going down. We don't have a choice. We have a choice either to kill this thing or build it. And our standpoint with Iron Range Building Trades is that we want to build this thing, okay? And you guys are going to work, the steelworkers are going to work in there. But our whole thing here to begin with tonight, we understand Cliffs, Lorenzo, I mean, he is, he is the real deal, there's no doubt about it. Well, we've got six years before we do anything. Right now, we have a path, maybe it, maybe it's going to fall apart, who knows? And if it does, well, then we, then we, promises is broken again, but no big deal. We already go, we, six years, we got to build this thing, period. We don't care who's going to run the damn thing afterwards, we got to get it built first.
The people in the back there that haven't had a chance to-
All right, Governor, good, good to see you. I would say this, that in the last two years, we have had Essar Steel name changed to Masabi Metallics, name changed to Chipewa, name changed to Dubai, name changed to DSA. By the way, DSA's motto is one plus one is 11. And, you know, I don't know, they figured that out, I mean, it's, but anyway, during that timeframe, Cliffs has spent 75 million cash at UTAC, $115 million to buy out US- Steel and Arslar Middle over in Michigan. They'll ramp that place up at the Empire if they have to. $750 million for an HBI plant, which, by the way, is unforgivable to some of you guys here, you legislators, you drove the guy out of here, is what you did. It's, it's goddamn absurd, what you did. But, you know, going forward here, these guys were supposed to be in construction by September 1st, 2017. I got a letter of yours in my hand, Governor, okay? You give them a goddamn extension. And October 1st came, you gave them another extension to December, and then the extension went to June of this year. In fact, Tom Clark, I, I should say the billionaire Tom Clark, he, he, so I'm counting the days, oh, we're going to have that money, we're going to be started in June. What did you guys do again? Another extension? Okay, this, this, this is beyond absurd. I think the gal here said something like, if they don't have the money, every goddamn cent, okay, to get going next year, you got to get these guys the hell out of here, don't you? Get them out of here. And I, I might point out one other thing.
You can, you can, you can...
Let me point out, can I point out one other thing, Governor? The guy says it'll take six years to get permits? You know, Cliffs has been mining on the Iron Range for a hun, over 100 years, okay? They can't get a permit? They can't get, it takes six years to get a permit? I mean, this, this is, this is beyond bizarre, okay? The whole thing is beyond bizarre, but I, go ahead, I'm going on.
Well, I, I don't believe you said it's like six years, but I would say, you can properly blame me for agreeing to those extensions. You know, hindsight's 20/20, but you're right, we gave extensions and didn't get the results that we had been promised.
Okay, let me...
That's on me.
Let me just say one other thing. While you guys have been munking with SR and all these name changes, Hibbing Tech's been running out of iron ore, okay? They've been running out of iron ore, and they have been totally neglected during this whole process, okay? Right now, we need a commitment from you guys that we're going to get ore from this body to Hibbing Tech. This place can run for 25 years. There's nothing wrong with that plant, we got 750 employees there, 750. They'll be on the street in five years, okay? Now, you guys got the power to fix that. Can we get that done? Can we get a commitment from you? You guys, we got legislators here, can we get that commitment from you?
Well, Masabi Metallics has, owns, pardon blue, they own 50/50 with Cliffs, the part in yellow. If Cliffs wants to mine half of that, then that's something they can negotiate, or the, only the judge, is the district court judge, will make that decision. That's where Masabi Metallics is right now, to get the, the authority from the court, which is required under state law, it is 50/50 ownership. If, if Cliffs wants, has other sites outside of the boundary here, that it wants a permit to mine, then it, then it needs to apply for them, and it has that, that right to do so.
Okay, Governor, thanks for your time.
If Mercuria becomes a major investor, can they take the profits and transfer it to their tax haven in the British Virgin Islands?
If, if, if things start generating those kinds of profits, uh, I won't be here. Somebody else can, can look into what's going on there. I, I can't answer that, I don't know.
Because that's where they're incorporated.
Well, these, these financiers, I said, if they could have found US financiers, and Clark tried to do that for months, then we wouldn't be having that discussion. It's a global, you know, financial markets, and I can't, I'm not vouching for Mercuria, I'm not vouching for any of them, except to say, we got to see money on the table, it's got to be invested, it's got to be put into some US bank account, and then money is money. But I, I'm not going to dispute this, it's less desirable to have people move, remove farther away. I just want to say, you know, you've been really extraordinarily patient and also polite, and I really want to thank you for that, and we'll keep going here till 9:30 if there's interest in, in doing so, but anybody who wants to leave and needs to leave can certainly do so as well.
Thank you, Governor, and everybody. You just touched on something that made, raised a question in my mind. It's taken that much time to raise the money via Masabi Metallics, Mercuria, and all the, the phases in between, when Cliffs decided they needed to fund their, their project in Ohio in a project year. That money came from US sources almost immediately, it was days in that, that money got funded. This, is there, is that telling us something, that they couldn't find Chase Manhattan Banks or US Bank to fund this project on the, for these other, for these other parties? And when it, when they finally did, it was after months and, I mean, I remember hearing, it, it was months before, and now we found somebody in some corner of the world is promising US dollars, when real US dollars on real projects came almost immediately.
More power to Cliffs. I have the highest respect for the way it's been operated, and they went from, you know, very low stock value, asset value, to now where they are now, and they've done it very well. And, you know, again, I invite them to come in here and, and make application to take over whatever property they have that they wanted to develop for, for additional, additional resource. I mean, the state would welcome that.
I guess, I guess I'm just calling into question the, the veracity of the funding that took so long to, to come...
I, I share your concern. You know, and I've been burned along with all of you so many times, that, you know, all these representations from Mr. Heasley, who's been, been involved in this for a month, you know, I can understand that, why they fall on deaf ears. All I can say is that they legally own the project now, they have a legal right to, to try to develop it. If they don't, then they'll deal with that, but they have that right.
Another question for Building and Trades and Masabi Metallic. When do you guys plan on ramping up? And who's the general contractor you guys got in mind?
Question from the building, say it again, please?
For you guys, Masabi Metallic. Who are you guys going to have for general contractor out there? And when do you plan on ramping up, getting the trades out there?
So, looking at the schedule now, as you look at the need to complete engineering, all these other things that have to happen, at this point, I think you will see a much higher level of activity coming in the spring, probably, truth be told, to get up to the levels that you got, that you're talking about. But there will be more activity going as we move forward, and more funding comes in, and we finally hit the preconditions for the credit facility and so on. So it's just a steady process going forward, okay?
Who's the general?
Oh, so, we, we've got local contractors that, that are already working on site, we've got more that are set up to be on site, so, you know, we'll, we'll give you more with that as we go forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are two contractors that we've been working with on this project.
Is it like a tomorrow?
Right.
Okay. That's all you had to say.
All right, no, I, I mean, sorry, I didn't, didn't get, you want specific names, fair enough.
Uh, Mr. Heasley, my name is John Canis, I'm a miner here for 33 years, worked six years in Alaska on construction projects, so, starting out with the pipeline, and that, that pipeline was basically built in about three years, 800 miles, and over a couple mountain ranges, and, and things can be done, you know, if you put your mind to it. Anyway, the first question was ethics. Are you going to be truthful with us, tell us the truth? You, you've had so many lies going out, that it's 80% complete or 75% complete, it wasn't you personally, but it was the company before you. And, and treat your contractors with respect, your suppliers with respect. It's been, it's, it's not a really good history that you have up here, so we hope that would improve, and, and what you put out in the press, make it be accurate, not, not lies. They were out and out lies, the governor knows that, you know, we, we've read that in the newspaper. We're, we're really moving along, we're going to do this, do that, and it doesn't happen. But the general contractor, you got to look at people like Bechtel, or, or Peter Kiewit, somebody that goes in and gets the job done. If you have little contractors, living piecemeal, and you're trying to manage it yourself, you're not going to do it. It's not going to turn out well. You've got to have a general contractor that oversees the project, where you can stand back and make sure he has money to do the job. That's all I have to say. Be ethical.
Okay, well, thanks.
This is a question for the DNR. And specifically, I was just curious, you know, you said, if this doesn't work out the way it is now, you're going to have to go back to drone zero in six years, that's what you said, correct?
Well, again, the, the leases are approved as part of the permit to mine. To get to a permit to mine takes several steps. And the first is that a company has to decide what it is they want to mine. Let's, you know, as I mentioned, Cliffs could come in with a permit to mine and all that red stuff, right now, okay? If they wanted to do that, here's what they have to do, they have to, first off, they have to do their own background engineering. Then they have to submit a request to the department for consideration of permit to mine. That means they have to go through environmental review, and these are the dreaded words you've always heard, environmental impact statement. An environmental impact statement on a large project takes time, in large part because it's open for public comment, and because the public gets a comment on it, and we have to address the comments, it, it makes it a fairly lengthy period of time. That requires during that EIS process, really full examination of the whole operation. It's not just the pit they're going to dig, but it's the infrastructure they're going to use, it's the transportation they're going to use, it's the emissions they're going to generate, it's the water they're going to need, the water they're going to generate, it's the whole description of that plant. That process just frankly takes a long time, and I don't think three years is unreasonable to expect it will take that amount of time. Once an environmental review is done, then that we actually get into the permits that are required, and we talk often about the permit to mine, because that's what we're talking about here. It's, that's a permit that comes from the Department of Natural Resources, and that takes some of the information from the EIS, but the permit to mine is ultimately a full description of how the whole operation works, the, you know, infrastructure, the processing, the, the disposal of waste and everything else. That whole process takes, you know, a couple of years. And in addition, they need several other permits, so they need air quality permit, they need water quality permit, they need water appropriation permits, they typically need other wetland permits, so there's a, a number of, you know, up to two dozen additional permits that are needed, all, all of which have to be processed in the same period of time. So what I'm suggesting is, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect it, for a new permit to mine, it could take up to six years to get a new permit to mine. If a company has an existing operation, and they have a permit to mine, it describes like, like that does, what the pit boundary is, but if they have adjacent land to that pit boundary, there's not included in that permit to mine, they can come in for a permit amendment. A permit amendment can be done in a much quicker amount of time, we've done several of those in the last few years. But to, to start with, I'm sorry?
Hold on.
Uh, it, it was six months to a year, permit amendment can go pretty quickly. But the, so, so that's the timeframe that you're looking at, if, if the, if the project were to die, and the permit goes along with it, the leases become available, and they are transferable to a new company, and before those leases can be executed, exercised, we have to go through another permit to mine process.
But we already have the profit. We're 50/50 right there, so why would we have to go and do it all over again? We've got 50/50 on there, you said right there, the yellow, yellow, yellow.
Let's, here, again, on this, on this map, everything that's in blue is currently 100% owned by Masabi Metallics. What's in yellow, which is 54%, the majority ownership currently is Masabi Metallics 100%. The yellow is jointly 50/50 Masabi Cliffs, but that is in dispute in court right now. So the court has yet to agree that that is the case. And the, and the red, which is 100% Masabi, which is all, excuse me, 100% Cliffs, which is also in court, is 5%. So the majority ownership of the mineral leases right now is clearly with Masabi Metallics. But the leases are approved by virtue of, the, the opportunity to dig in that pit area is approved by virtue of the pit, the, excuse me, the, the permit to mine. And so if the, if the permit to mine goes away, the fact that has 50% ownership in that yellow does not give them the authority to go in and start taking those minerals out, they still have to submit a permit to mine that has to ultimately be approved.
And I guess this gets to the question that I wanted to get to. The question I wanted to get to is specific about how long it takes in the state of Minnesota. And, and, you know, outside of you, when I'm looking at this, and you're looking at us and saying, with all these hoops and all these issues, and it's going to take six years. I mean, structurally, what's broke in this state is how this process works within the DNR. You look at, and it's not apples to apples, and I'm not saying it's direct comparison, but Lorenzo went to the state of Ohio for the HBI plant, and he sat down with the governor, he told him what he wanted to do, he said he needed it, he needed to go fast, and he needed, what did he say, $5 million? And in five to six months? Five months, got a permit, right? On all apartments, all, everything that you described. So sat there with all those permits, in five months, on the Great Lakes, in a state, on a, on a brownfield site. This is a brownfield site, right? We're on the Great Lakes. I appreciate those things, that's why we live here. But how can it take the state of Ohio, right, strong democratic state generally, no different than us, five months to do something where you're talking, we can't even, five months get a permit to mine extension? I mean, that's the structural...
To be clear, he's not mining in Ohio.
I, and I understand that, that's what I'm saying, but he's still got a, a complete industry, right? He got the HBI plant completely permitted, and, oh, by the way, they threw $30 million in, correct?
You're absolutely right that it takes way too long in Minnesota. And 2014, I proposed that Steph would cut, cut the timeline in half, and various groups gave in and said, no, we want all the, as the commissioner said, a public comment period, that it didn't pass. It's a very valid point to bring in the next legislative session and say, we've got to speed this up. I couldn't agree with you more. It takes way too long to go through this process.
And it's not just this industry, you look at timber, right? We got timber falling on the ground, dead.
Same rules, same laws.
Exactly, and it's, that's what's broken here, and it needs to get fixed.
It does, you're right, I agree with you, and I tried, failed, may the next one be more successful. Well, yes, sir.
Uh, I don't have a dog to hunt in this thing. I just have information to provide to those that do not have the information. One thing is, I notice, and thank you for letting me speak here, you're a governor, correct? You're not a dictator, right?
That's how it worked.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're a governor, you're not a dictator. In history, isn't it classical to underbid something, and then to do everything you can to get the high bidder to fail? It's called robber baron. They're, they're robber barons. They're operating like robber barons, is what they're doing. Your interest is trying to get as much money as you can for the contractors, and, and get people paid, and get the project on. That's what you're wanting to do. Now, I hear this thing, oh, this market, we can't take this market. I hope most people in here know that the majority of steel used in the United States is not made in the United States. So as a society, we're going to have to decide if we're going to allow the exportation of slave, economic slave labor in foreign countries, which will undermine our unions and our good paying jobs. There's, there's no other way to, to handle that. I mean, we're allowing people that work for barely nothing to take away our good jobs. And as a society, we have to make a decision whether we're going to allow that or not. Now they're saying, oh, poor Hibbing Tech, and I, they haven't got any ore. Well, I just happen to be lucky to fall in some information in the late 90s, 97, 98. Come home from work, I worked at Mintac, I'm retired, I worked 33 years there as a mill right. My neighbor says, Bob, do you know what happened today? I says, no, what happened today? He says, Henry, and I can't forget his, I remember his last name, but it was Henry B. He used to be superintendent for Erie, and he became a consultant for the iron ore industry. And he comes into this business, I, I won't say where it is, because they might not want to know who it is. But they come, this guy comes in the business, he says, US Steel traded the W2 pit. Now, for any of you that don't know about W2...
Sir, I've had to ask you to kind of...
I'm going to try to get this tight. In Buell, in Buell City Hall where I live, there used to be a big picture of the W2 pit. And I asked Ray Bataglia, God bless him, he just died recently, I said, Ray, what is this? He says, that's the, the W2 pit for US Steel. I says, that thing is huge, that's five miles north to south, it's west of 25, and it goes 13 miles. He said, yep, that's a big, big body of ore. And I have sources that know that that ore is high grade, very little overburn, very soft, easy to grind, it is high silica.
Thank, thank you very much, no, thank you, thank you very much.
I, I need to get this one thing in.
You got 30 seconds.
This one thing in. There's enough ore for 25 years for Mintac and for Hibbing Tech, and if they divide that ore body. Because the ore body by Aurora, that they traded for US Steel, is 350... Because the ore body by Aurora that they traded for US Steel is 350 feet deep in blue-black ore, 80%, and it's the richest, largest natural ore deposit in the history of North America. US Steel's sitting on that by Aurora. Do you think about that? Thank you.
You know, I couldn't agree with you more about the, you know, US rolling over for foreign imports. Jim Overstar, been fighting that and others too for 40 years. And to his credit, President Trump's done more stand up and protect our industry than anybody else around, so give him credit for that, yeah.
Thank you, Governor. Just a very quick, brief question for Mr. Heasley. Could you once and for all address the press release that was issued just two weeks ago by Masabi Metallic's potential partner in this project, Mercuria? And I'm talking about the original version of the release that went out of its way to highlight the potential involvement of Essar Steel in this project, which I believe, and I think a lot of people in this room would agree, really showed a remarkable lack of awareness for what the communities of the Iron Range have been through over the course of the last decade under Essar's leadership of this project.
So, yeah, you know, so I saw the same press release, right, saw that, and I understand that Mercuria has been using Essar as an advisor on this investment. Now, Essar's got some really significant reasons to want to see this project go forward. They've got guarantees, you know, of something like a billion dollars or something that they owe, and seeing the project succeed actually helps them tremendously. So, they've got a reason to try to help it go forward. That's not a bad thing, and I understand you've had a history that's challenging, and, you know, you're not happy. I get it, right? I can't really address any of that, and I wasn't here for any of that, and, you know, fair enough. No, 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 I'm talking about your history. Talking about your history, right? So, I understand your frustration, right? My goal's simple, it's to see this thing go forward, it's to see the project move, right? And if Mercuria comes in with more capital and they want to be equity end, that's great. It's always great to have more equity, right? So, I'm just anxious to see them move forward and be part of the team going forward. I think that's a great outcome. That's a $112 billion company that is globally active in the metals world. I mean, it's an energy. They do really a lot of energy as well. That's never a partner that I look sideways at, right? I'd love to have them be part of that, so.
Coming in the background, is that a chance? Because, Governor, David, I mean, what did you just say earlier today about Essar's involvement with the project? Just like an hour ago.
Well, I should say, I don't know what their involvement is, as far as I know right now with Nubai. They don't have any involvement. Mercuria is looking at the possibility of investing, and they're the ones who brought up the subject of Essar, which came out of the blue, as far as I was concerned, too. So, I can only say I don't know.
He just said that he's looking forward to, that they were advising, that he's looking forward to their expertise. And that you want them to have nothing to do with the project.
I share your view. I think they've been just dishonest throughout the whole process.
How can a company take so much money from the people and then get still back in on the financial back door of a project that they just defaulted on?
Well, I told Mercuria when we had our conversation what our thought of Essar and why they should not have any involvement with the financing part. They're trying to get some of their money out of the project, and I, you know, that's another realm that does not--
Has more free money for them?
I don't, I can't answer. I don't know. I don't know what Essar, Mercuria, when Mercuria comes out here next month, I'll ask them that, and you should ask, and we can all ask them that.
And that wasn't directed at you, by the way. I'm just saying, in general, how does that happen?
Well, it's a global financial market, and all these people in Nubai and Switzerland and Argentina and everywhere else are doing things that I haven't totally unaware of, and the money's moving around. The challenge is to capture 650 million of that for this project.
Stick with an American company that's been mining for 170 years.
We've been through this before.
The investors don't afford it.
Any else? Somebody wants to add? Original? Yes, sir.
Yes. The problem that I'm seeing with this, and I've been going to these silly meetings ever since it was MSI. Now, we've been given a line of bull by the DNR, by the MPCA, and the things that they told us, they didn't stand behind. They've made rulings that don't make any sense whatsoever, and they're not treating everybody fairly. I see our local companies, Hibbitac, US Steel, getting fined all the time for air quality violations. You don't see that with this company, and yet they covered the whole of Snowball Lake and everything around it in red dust, which we were assured by the MPCA would never cross that line that they drew on the map. There were no fines. Now, until you start treating everybody equally and applying the laws equally to all of them, this is not right. These extensions, as we've had pointed out, you said you were at fault. I appreciate you taking the blame for it, but put a stop to them. Don't give them special privileges. Don't give them any more money. Don't treat them with kit gloves. Make sure that they have to toe the line with the laws in place like everybody else does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Governor, we have one more.
Yes.
Just another construction question. How many construction workers are on site today?
You know, I didn't count today. We've got something in the neighborhood of 50 people on site every day. So, you know, it changes day to day, but let's call it roughly 50 people on site every day.
Okay, so you're going to go from 50 people today, and you're saying in March you want to ramp up. So, when you ramp up in March, how many men and women, construction workers, are you anticipating having on that project in March?
Yeah. I can't give you month-by-month head count projections. You know, we can have this conversation at a later time, but, you know, I think you know what it means to ramp up construction, right? So, we're talking about adding activity, bringing more people, doing more work, and but I'm not, I'm not here to give you month-by-month head count numbers. Just, we'll do it, we can talk about that later if you like.
I got a question for you.
I got a question. I was about, I got a question for Gary on a follow-up on Mr. Coop's question. It was about the economic feasibility on making a profit. And, thank you.
You said one of the things was you're going to be lower cost. Okay, so lots of questions are on the room. Said you're very open to union. Labor's going to be the same, right? It's an ore body that's very similar, equipments of a size. You're going to have same vendors, you're going to buy parts, same pricing. You're going to buy fuel from the same vendor, same pricing. You're going to buy electrons, right, similar pricing. Chemicals, same pricing. I want to know how your plan is to be such a lower cost that this makes it an economic project compared to all the rest of the businesses in the region.
So, you know, I've looked at benchmarking of various mines on the range, and I see how they stack up. I'm not going to go through with you department by department cost. It's not what we're here for tonight. If you want to work with us, I assume you work for Cliffs?
I do.
Right. So, if you want to benchmark, we can get together sometime in the future and do that, and it would be interesting. But I'm not, I'm not going to go through and just, and give you, you know--
And thank you for that. And it's not a benchmarking exercise because you can't go through section or department costs for you to come up with an answer. You would have to describe to this group a game changer because you don't have it. I mean, it would have to be something substantial, so.
Hi, Governor. Nice seeing you again. Thank you for hosting this again. My name's Dave Listegard, and the mayor of Aurora. And like the governor, we do believe actions speak louder than words. And my question would be that Mr. Landwehr stated that if you didn't complete the project by, the pelletizer by 2019, he could pull the leases. If he was to tell you, or the state of Minnesota was to tell you that if you did not finish by the end of 2019, we were going to pull them leases because we're done, we're moving on, would you continue to move forward at this moment?
I'd move forward--
Oh, this is for Mr., this is for Mr. Heasley.
Yeah, so--
It's a fair question. So, if we say, the state of Minnesota says, we played this game, actions speak louder than words, because you're very well spoken, you paint a really, really good picture, but we've heard that like four or five times now. So, the question is, if the state of Minnesota says, you will complete that pelletizer, or we will pull the leases at the end of 2019, will you continue to move forward? Thank you.
A couple of things. That's not what the leases actually say, so we can go into this in more detail. No.
Is it true?
It is a, it is a grounds for termination. It doesn't say they will be terminated, it says grounds for termination.
So, tensions are coming.
So, you know--
I asked the governor that.
I can say whatever I want. I'm not going to be governor in 2019. First, first six days of 2019--
Sir, it's just a fair question. If you could just answer it, if the state of Minnesota let you know right up front, stand up, if you are not going to complete it at the end of 2019, will you move forward and will you complete this project?
Yeah. So, you know, I hear your question. We're not going to get into hypotheticals. I understand what you're trying to achieve. You know, as you ask the question, you know, we're not going to get into this discussion, and it's, it's just, we're not going to have--
Last, I think we're getting, everybody's been very patient, very tolerant. Question, ask the question in the very back there.
There's got to be a construction timeline, and if it doesn't end on December 31st, 2019, then the next question that the mayor from Aurora was saying is, what, are we looking at an extension on January 1st, 2020? I mean, there's got to be a construction timeline.
That's a decision the next administration will make, the next--
So, what we're looking for is something from the company saying, we have an expectation to be done building a pelletizer in 16 months. Is that even possible? Because I guarantee you, every trades guy in here will say no.
Yeah, so, we'll have these conversations--
Especially if you don't start until March.
Yeah.
He's not able to give you the definitive answers that you want. And that's where, again, things are right now where they are. They're not as clear as they should be. I wish they were. They are what they are. I just ask you again to look at what the legal realities are and what happens in a capitalist society when somebody owns something and they have a right to operate it, whether somebody else thinks they're likely to succeed or not. I thank you very much. You've been very, very patient, very tolerant. Thank you very much.